Good evening, everybody. My name is Nara Anoprio and I am the Chair of the Board of Finance and I welcome you to the public hearing. A couple of ground rules. We have a sign-in sheet up here. You have to be Clinton resident at least 18 years old. And just put your name and address. We are giving you a three-minute time period to talk and one of our members here, Tom, is going to be timing in. So if you can keep your comments as succinct as possible, that would be appreciated. And we'll get ready to get started. The only thing I do want to add to the minutes, because we did receive a couple of letters, which we will not read, but we will add them to the minutes of this meeting. So I just want to acknowledge to Mary, we got two letters from the library. We've got six letters regarding the Jazzercise class, which I do just want to mention quickly that the Board of Finance here did not cut it. And then we did get one letter from the Connecticut Economic Resource Center regarding the town plan. Okay? All right, we're ready to get started. Okay, so we're going to split up because we have Board of Education in town. We're going to do Board of Education first, so comments on the Board of Ed. We will just come up, step up to the podium and we'll give you the microphone.
The point of order is that the legal notice that everybody has gotten or saw in the newspaper was suspicious, did not reflect what the Board of Finance had passed. They put into the town capital budget, funds, and supplies for the year.
Okay, Kirk, I'm stopping you. This is a public hearing. If they talk as a citizen, we can get out and talk. This could be raised at our meeting afterward. So we got company. Can you put first one on the list?
Well, I don't know which chair this is. But see, I... For those who want to speak at Board of Ed, can they come on up? I believe there were a couple of people.
My name is Erica Galvin. I live at Two Old and Dry. And I'm actually here tonight wearing my... All right. I'm here tonight wearing my hat as the Chair of the Clinton Board of Education. I'm not going to go through a long presentation because you've given us more than ample time to kind of give support to our budgetary request, but I do have a few updates for you that I think you need to know about. The first is to recognize the hard work of my board. About nine months ago, we decided to undertake the work trying to seek a more cost-efficient and effective healthcare insurance provider for our staff. We actually were successful in doing that. We were successful in getting all of our bargaining areas together to sign on to our new health insurance, which means not only were we able to meet your requirement of the $250,000 operating budget savings cut for this year, but it also means that in subsequent years, we are going to have better control over our health insurance costs, which for me personally was a huge prop. I didn't like that that was one of our largest line items and one that we had the least amount of control over. So I wanted to make sure you were aware of that. So we have cut that $250,000 from our operating health insurance line rent. The second thing that we did over about seven months' worth of work is to conduct an intense and extensive facility study to take a look at how we're really utilizing our school buildings and make sure that we're using them to the best benefit of our tax dollars and, most importantly, our students. To that end, the committee voted last November to close Pearson School. I'm sure you're very much aware of this, which again has resulted in about an over $800,000 savings for this year. And that savings will of course carry over because we won't be operating that school anymore in the service of our students. So that's the second thing I want to bring to bear attention. The third thing is that tonight, the Board of Education opted to cut our capital request So that brings our total capital request to $398,971, which is an increase over last year of $148,971. So we want you to be aware that we had made that cut as you discussed your, as you made your deliberations today. Again, I want to thank my board. We've worked really hard. We've looked at all the numbers. We've made some very difficult decisions. Anyone who knows me knows how hard the Pearson decision in particular really was, but I think it's the right thing to do for the town. It's tightened our budget and it's made sure that we have money for the programs that we need for our students while making sure that we're not asking the taxpayers to spend money unnecessarily. Thank you.
I just wanted to talk in support of the education budget and in fact, trying to either maintain what has been proposed by our excellent board and even considering adding a few things back. Because what happens every year is that vote after vote, a little bit more gets cut. And it's the little things that get cut that really, really matter to our education. And in particular, I'm going to talk about the parents. Some of you who maybe it was since you've been in an elementary school, but our elementary school has to work with a more diverse student population than ever. And diversity includes learning differences. And I have a son, Will, who's on the autism spectrum. And he doesn't need a parent assigned to him, but he benefits from having a parent in the classroom. He also benefits from the extracurriculars that are offered at Pearson and Sudopie Elliott and hopefully at Morgan. And it's important to keep the funding put out as well because our students thrive not just in the classroom, but in all aspects of their education. And just to kind of, I'm a proud parent, so I hope you guys don't think I'm boasting too much, but you know, even though our kid on the autism spectrum, he's been able to thrive at Clinton Public Schools because of all the extras. And in fact, in June, he's going to be representing Clinton at the National History Week because of Mr. Carrabaugh, who runs the History Week, and because of all the hard work of the people who organized all the extracurriculars at Pearson and then the next year at Elliott. So I just want to really emphasize that even if you think, oh, we can cut a little bit more here or cut a little bit more there, the things that are the little bits are actually the things that can make a difference in a child's life. Thank you.
I'm Mary Rose, and I'm the board of Sider Lane. I would like to thank the Board of Education for providing a budget that is sound and takes into account the needs of our community. I'd like to request that the Board of Finance forward this request to the voters and thank you for your support for that.
Good evening. Laura Colbank, Ainsborough Lane. I'm here on behalf of supporting the education budget and all the hard work that our superintendent ordered and done. About 20 years ago, when I worked for a consumer products company, I asked my boss, who was president, what the most important trait in employee was, and he responded, "Trust." That has resonated with me ever since. When my husband and I owned a business, we trusted our employees and empowered them, our boots on the ground, to make sound decisions, and they did. Trust and verify was key to our success. I trust our superintendent and Board of Ed make decisions based on education needs. I trust him to make fiscally responsible decisions. I've spent a lot of time reviewing the budget book, and my trust is verified. They have diligently responded to declining enrollment, cutting staff and expenses, resulting in one of the lowest costs for pupil expenditures in the area. In the past two years, they've cut 11 certified teachers, nine parents, secretary, custodian staff, which translates to 16 full-time equivalent cuts. Last year, they made the decision to close, tough decision to close Pearson. Plan, excuse me, the plan was swiftly implemented and resulting in savings for this year. This decision also required hours of actual planning and implementation to reconfigure Joel and Elliot. The proposed budget reflects additional cuts of four certified positions, including principal, two secretaries, two custodians, and four parents. So the bottom line is that verification is in the cost per pupil, which is one of the lowest along the Shore Line with the exception of Guilford by $500, and among surrounding towns, the lowest, third lowest of 13 surrounding towns. There are a lot of people who couldn't make it here tonight because they're busy parents, working, or other commitments, and I know they're also education supporters. I ask that you don't, respectfully ask that you don't make further cuts to the budget. Thank you.
I'm a parent of two graduates in public schools and I'm a teacher. I feel like it's not even been a year since we were back here having the same conversation about how everything in this town is so normal. Our taxes are normal, our per pupil spending is lower than normal. If you were to take your house, and whether you have a million-dollar house on the water or a small cape or a ranch, and you were to take your house and flop it down in any surrounding town, any real estate agent can tell you your taxes would be the same or lower. Your taxes are not high here in Clinton compared to the Shore Line. Last Wednesday, there was an informational session at the library where our superintendent and our Board of Ed members gave an informational session. And something really interesting happened. It was not very well attended and weren't that many people there, so you had a chance to really ask questions and hear a lot of information. And while somebody was making a statement about taxes being regressive and poverty and people are struggling and struggling in Clinton so they can't fund their schools, I was looking down at the page that showed that the taxes, the per pupil spending in other towns, like Madison spends 7% more per pupil than Clinton, Grandford spends 5% more, Old Sableton spends 12% more, Westbrook spends 26% more. And I was looking down at that page at the same moment that Superintendent O'Donnell was addressing that complaint by saying, "These are the same as our children," we're saying, "Okay, you know, people don't want to pay their taxes because they can't afford it because there's poverty and they're struggling." And she was addressing the fact that it's these same children that we are serving in the school system, right? That we're providing services to children that don't have all the options that maybe children have in other surrounding towns. That we see the impact of poverty in schools every day, and we do. Any teacher can tell you many, many stories. And we meet kids every day where they're at. We meet them at their threshold. We are teaching the kids that we have here that come to us. And the Board of Ed and the teachers and the superintendent and assistant superintendent and everybody has a charge. Their charge is to educate the children that are sensitive. And when you have a chance to provide opportunities for kids to climb out of that, to have a chance that one day they graduate and not have to continue that cycle that they might have grown up in, that's probably how you're addressing poverty as well. So that's the charge, to provide what our kids need and what the community needs. So I'm going to ask the Board of Finance to please put forward the budget as presented and thank them for all their hard work and thank you to the Board of Ed as well.
Good evening. My name is Michael Hughes. I live at Ainsborough Road. And I listened to the Board of Education superintendent from a video that she went in front of the Board of Finance the other day. And she was making a plea, that is her responsibility, to get as much money as she can for the school and the students. And then she says, "That is responsibility of the Board of Finance to tell them what they can afford." Well, I think that's wrong. It's the responsibility of the schools and the superintendent to get the most reasonable budget that the town can afford. And the Board of Education and the superintendent need to teach the students financial responsibility. Year after year, the school budget goes up and up. You have a surplus and it goes up. We only have about 13,000 people in this town and we can't afford it. It's clear. And you end up having a surplus and you're asking for more money. I think that is irresponsible and you're not looking out for the kids. You're looking out for your own pockets and the teachers. So I'm saying that year after year now, for the past three years, the budgets in this town have been defeated. Not once, not twice, three times, four times. And it's going to happen again this year. We close a school and then we have the audacity to say, "We need more money." We saved $800,000. People are not stupid, okay? We're not stupid. So I'm saying that this town to live and thrive needs to get a grip on our financial responsibilities, and we continue not to. I'm on a plan in zoning. And that commission is dysfunctional. I mean, and we, we're not working as a team to get the right things for the town. It's all bipartisan. Republicans, Democrats, no one gives a damn about the town. And the school board, same way. So I reject the school board's plea. Now I open the financial Board of Finance, tells them to cut 1.5 million. No. And you people smirk when you think you can't do it. Well, pretty soon you're not going to have the money. People can, you can only get so much out of the stone. So, and I'd like to say a few more things. You need to understand, well, I'm going to continue. You need to understand, you need to understand, when this meeting, when the town votes and is voted down, the Board of Finance is going to have a meeting. The point, I'm going to finish, please, with just the landing. The Board of Finance has a meeting and they have like a bracket. "I'm going to cut the budget $5,000, $10,000." Just don't talk into it all. And then they come back and say, "The town is going to pass." Okay? That's how they run this board. It's simple how they run the board. Go to your meeting and listen. Go to the meeting after this rejected and listen, damn it. We just got to wake up.
You're going to be arrested. Hey, take a seat.
What I'm saying? Come on, really? No, I'm telling you, you are personal. You're out of order. Sit down, please. You have your right to say it. You have your three minutes. Everybody else, okay? You had your three minutes. No, you do not.
Yes, I do.
You do not. I don't understand how that's difficult to understand. People need to start listening.
Are there other people who wish to speak about the Board of Ed?
Speak up.
Charlie Fest, 7 Grove Street. I would like to say thank you for all the hard work you've put in and to everyone who's put forth what I believe is a responsible education budget. It is for the children. It is not in protection of teachers. We are losing teachers. And anytime you close a school, you still have the population to teach. They're moving to different buildings. So the program still has to be in place. I think it's a responsible budget and I wholeheartedly support it and I hope the Board of Finance will too. Thank you.
No other comments on the Board of Ed? Okay. No remaining comments on the board?
I'm Mary, Mary Gilbert.
My name is Mary Gilbert. I live at 45 Pearl Street. I have had the pleasure of serving as a member of the Board of Trustees of the Henry Carter Hall Library for over 15 years. Passionate about our library. The Board of Finance recently cut $10,000 from the library budget, so I stand before you tonight to respectfully request that that amount be reinstated. The primary use for those funds is to be provided, to provide the Sunday hours. We weren't able to provide the Sunday hours this winter and we heard many folks, you know, worried about that. I think many families, especially busy families that have children that are, you know, Saturday is a day of sports and all kinds of things happening in your lives. And Sunday was always, I know for my family, a day where we thought, oh my gosh, we've got to get, our library's open, this is great. We can get that, you know, project done, get them in there. Folks can use the free Wi-Fi and so many services available. I'd like to share some, well, in 2018, I should say, that we did have the Sunday hours. We offered 11 Sundays that year, when maybe it was a snow day, I'm not sure. We were open from noon to four. Perfect time, middle of the day, get families in, our patrons in. We averaged 138 folks visiting on each Sunday that we were open. During that time, 365 items were borrowed or circulated, as we call it, which is incredible for a four-hour period of time. Each Sunday cost about $600, and that is, you know, including the staff and utilities for the building at that time. So, you know, if you do the math, it's $4.25 per patron that walked in those doors on those dreary, you know, wintery days where, you know, it was a warm place to come. I think you'll find that that certainly is quite a bargain. The, I guess just in closing, I'd like to say that, and remind the Board of Finance that the Henry Carter Hall Library, you know, it doesn't serve just as a library. We are the center of the community. We're proud of that. But we're, you know, we serve as a senior center, a teen center, you know, a business resource center, folks looking for jobs and use those services and all the wonderful things that a library provides. We know there'll be some other folks talking about some of those services, but... So thank you for all of your service.
I'm Johnny Allen, 15 Hooper's Way. Make it short, just above the town planner. You know, I don't know if everybody out there feels this, but the town is beginning to get unstuck. I mean, people on EDC, there's interest in the town, maybe it's because the economy in general is getting better, but we are actually starting to turn some corners around here. There's more interest, more people come in and more attracted to us. We do a lot more interconnections with the people around the state, Surf and CEDS and some other places. We have a reputation, and if people come in, it's very critical that we have the right staff here to make sure that we facilitate the maximum money to invest in the town. You can attract some money somewhere, but once they're here, you want to make sure you make it as easy and professional as possible. We don't have that right now. One of the things Michael Hughes said that I will agree with is planning and zoning commission needs some help. I'll be very polite. A planner is the kind of person, especially as we're moving forward, we made the decision last year to go to the town manager. They need a town planner. We're going professional in this town. It's working. So it's not been cut yet, but I know it's been kind of like dangled around, it's kind of some political football. As strongly as we could possibly say, you know, keep this town planner in, you know, we're making progress forward. It'd just be a pity to take a step back now. That's my advice. Thank you.
Good evening. Again, as everyone knows, I'd like to thank you for your work. We know it's difficult, but we also have other boards and commissions that have other duties that need to be funded and need to be looked at critically by the Board of Finance, but also need to be practically looked at. I'm here tonight, I'm Joe Scatino, 1 Hurd Bridge Road, Clinton, and also the chairman of the Partner Act Commission. I'm here tonight to ask the Board of Finance to restore $15,500 that you've cut from our budget, our budget request. To address those items specifically, first of all, let me say overall, our department of the resources and facilities under our care has a very credentialed and economical budget. We're very drugal and practical in the way we spend our money, and we use it to also encourage the community to help, which saves tax dollars. In this particular case, you've cut $2,500 from our general supplies budget. This supplies our office staff and our general supplies for production of things such as the beach passes. By cutting $2,500 there, you reduce our budget to $1,000. The beach passes alone cost $600 to produce. That leaves $400 to supply our office and staff for an entire year. It doesn't work. It won't work. Our general maintenance budget, these are items that supply things that aren't done by DPW, can't be done. They're done by our seasonal staff, painting sheds, buildings, general maintenance and our facilities ourselves with our seasonal staff and part-time staff. Sometimes we spend the entire $3,500, sometimes we don't spend all of it, but we do spend most of it. In this case, you reduced us, I believe, by $2,000 and it just, it leaves us eight hundred, I'm sorry, you reduced us by $3,000. It leaves us just $800 to do all the maintenance for the entire year with our seasonal staff that we usually do. And again, this buys paint, brushes, lots, light bulbs. And again, this buys paint, brushes, lots, light bulbs, you name it, that's what you've given us to do, eight hundred dollars. That doesn't work. You also reduced our, I'm gonna hurry because our three minutes running out, you reduced our repair and maintenance budget by ten thousand dollars. This year our budget is eighteen thousand dollars. We aren't even able to do the work we need to do on Hesford Pond because of that. By reducing our request, you left us with thirteen thousand five hundred. We are not going to be able to maintain our department with that amount of money. So, I ask you then, that you please restore those funds, at least on maintenance, to the eighteen thousand that you gave us this year. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board and fellow citizens. My name's Bob Wern, live on Huddington Wall Road with my beautiful wife Diane. We're in Newby's in this town for two years, and I've heard a lot and been involved with a few things. What I have to present tonight is a coalition that my wife and myself put together, and it's a holistic approach to what we believe, and from my third years of experience in manufacturing of areas where we think the town can benefit, and it's an umbrella that fits across education, police department, and all other processes that are involved with business like a town. The town can no longer conduct business as usual, this is very similar to any other business, continually raising the cost to taxpayers, your customers, which is what we all are, as in any business, can expect, and how can you expect to remain competitive with other towns, keep your customers, and have a viable business. The town must come into the twenty-first century and implement private sector business process improvements such as LEED and cut across every organization that I've heard from the school system to the town, to the police department. Many other states, cities, and towns across the country have implemented private sector improvement methods. There's thousands of these organizations that have to do what all of us that grew up in manufacturing have had to do to remain competitive, to drive costs down, and keep the quality of life and services available to everybody. The result from implementing these processes is reducing the cost of doing business by the elimination of waste that exists in all business processes, while at the same time the quality, improving the quality of your services, education, employee engagement, and overall operating efficiency. And efficiency is what we all need to talk about, is how you do more with less to improve the quality of life, the quality of services, and do faster than you ever had before. The cost of waste in service industries such as yourself can be as high as forty percent of operating cost. You can do your own numbers, the opportunity, I've heard about cost and the cut and losing this and wanting more money, the opportunity exists in your processes and collectively as a whole town, you can achieve the objective you want with the existing. Fifteen more seconds, correct?
Eleven.
Eleven. The other is the town must look to partner with local business leaders who have improved their own companies and draw on their leaders' experience. I've had some experience with that the past few months, we have some great businesses in town, and we often learn how to run the government and the town from people who have a lot of experience. Thank you, share some improvements.
Good evening, I'm Bruce Farmer, on Liberty Village, Clinton. I have to be brief, I have three things. As a former first electman, I can tell you that our budgeting process is a conundrum, confusing and difficult process with no real clear answers or good solutions. It's a very difficult process. I do believe that the Clinton taxes at this point in the new budget have actually now reached the tipping point, meaning that we are at a point at which taxes are so high that some folks will not want or be able to live here long-term, and some businesses won't thrive either. The Board of Finance will conclude their work this November as a board, but I urge the Board of Finance to lead by example now, tonight. There's a big difference between wants and needs, and the Board of Finance should cut out the wish list and spend wisely on needed critical capital projects already planned and scheduled, and not hold off on infrastructure projects already occurred and bonded for, because the longer we wait, the more these projects cost. The Board of Finance should cut out the salary for the full-time planner, even though that salary is back in the budget for a second year. I mean, we haven't hired anybody, you know, it's a year and a half now already, and we have a consulting plan, a planner now, who we don't have to pay benefits to. On the subject of consultants, the Board of Finance should cut down those costs too, because we now have so many consultants working on so many projects that it is costing us thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars for these outside consultants. Were they budgeted for? We are also hiring one for locating a suitable town manager. Why? There are national and state and regional municipal and town manager organizations that would do it for free. The same holds true for economic development and many other services and advice, all we have to do is ask. This would save substantial sums of money, and free is free is free. Carol Walter, elected Carol Walter deserves credit for going against the tide in her repeated attempt to cut our budgets, but the board selected by majority only cut a very small amount, well less than one percent, but the Board of Finance put most of these cuts back in the budget. Board of Finance did cut a fraction of the educational budget, but there are some items in both budgets that should be corrected or redefined as they appear confusing and possibly misleading. The budgets also assume that revenues will be there for the new fiscal year, as they all have projected. In talking to legislators, I can tell you that I believe that actual revenues will be lower due to state cuts on both the education and the town budgets. For one is forearmed. Everybody here tonight understands that the town and the school system has substantial fixed expenses, the state challenges as our neighboring towns have, but we do not have, they do not ask us for staggering budget increases. So, I ask the Board of Finance to do the right and prudent thing tonight, especially for the taxpayers.
My name is Helena Erskine. I am therefore the seniors jazzercise class here in Clinton. I am a resident of Kellywood. I've been teaching this class for over eight years, and the class has been in this town for, I think at least twelve, if not thirteen years as well. So, we are here as a group seeking clarification regarding the status of senior jazzercise classes. It's our understanding that the class is moving from the selectman's office budget to the park and rec budget, and the viability of the class was in question. I have no previous knowledge of budget issues, but I do know the expense of running the class has been consistent throughout all these years. The class began as once a week, over ten years ago, and increased to twice a week per the request of the members of the class. We're unsure as to the status of the class. There are two budget proposals, I guess, that are out there, one is sixty-eight fifty and one is twenty-eight something, I don't have the details. So, we're just not sure what this means for the class and for the students. The class serves the retired population in Clinton and local towns, it does bring others to the class who then shop and support the local economy as well. The patrons pay a dollar per class, and I don't know if that's accounted for in the budget as well, that they do contribute to the class. And we also serve, there's a few adult residents that have special needs who come to the class for exercise as well. So, we'd like to thank you for keeping the class on the, in the budget, but we're not, we're just not sure what the two numbers means.
Hi, my name is Christina Akomora, and I live on Glenwood Road. I've been a library board member along with Mary and all my wonderful fellow board members for over six, and was now myself. I'm here tonight to request the ten thousand dollars that was recently cut from the budget to be reinstated, and I'm just gonna tell you a very short but true story that happened recently. I think this story sums up just how, not only how invaluable an HCH staff is, but also the ripple effect that a library can have on its community as a whole. Last month, a patron who comes to the library every day was experiencing a weekend of emotional distress. She is an older woman, she lives alone, and she acknowledged that she could have gone to the Escheri Council of Seniors out of town, it's in Old Saybrook, or she could have waited till after the weekend and sought out the services of Clinton Social Services. But instead, since she comes to the library every day, and she takes in movies and practices tai chi there, she attends a lot of the evening programs that we offer, she already had a level of comfort with the staff there, and so she decided to seek help from them, and she received it. The HCH library staff are not trained social workers, but they do know when a fellow resident is in need. The staff helped the woman secure her cellphone, obtained valuable health-related information, got her Kleenex, and even phoned her at home after she left just to make sure that she was okay. Obviously, the library is not social services, and it is not a senior center per se, but it continues to be a welcoming environment staffed by smart, compassionate people who are only looking to make each visitor's experience as fulfilling as it can be. This, I believe, yields a more supportive and enriched community that benefits us all. So, I do hope you reconsider and restore the resources previously cut from the library budget, and I think we could all rest assured it is being spent in all the right places and on all the right people. And please remember that behind every great community is a great library. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Malsi Exo, I'm at ninety-two Glenwood Road, and I'm the owner of a parking lot that the school uses to park in. And I bought, I'm a single owner of a home, I've lived there for over six years, and we've always had a nice relationship. The town rents my lot to park for all the sports activities, the little league, so on that. So, this year the money has been reallocated, I'm told, and the parking lot apparently will not be able to use. So, I'm asking you respectfully if you can reallocate that money so people can continue to park at parking lot, enjoy their baseball and soccer games and everything that they get to enjoy, healthy communities, totally support the educational system too. You guys do great work, and also in education.
Can we just clarify that that's not school, that is town, that's not the school that is the town that uses that?
No, it's the town that rents the property to park for the community to use. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rick Santinelli, live at nine Dogwood Lane, and currently the president of the Henry Carter Hall Library. Obviously, I'd like to give the, at least ten thousand dollars back to get our Sunday hours back in, a lot of people use it, but I'd like to give you a couple of facts. This is our twenty-handers building of the Henry Carter Hall locker, and we've serviced close to three million people, or three million people that crossed through our threshold over those years. You know, we're averaging over a hundred and forty thousand people per year. Last year, we asked for seven hundred and fifty-four thousand, we wound up with seven twenty-one, that's why we lost our Sundays. The only way we can control our costs is by closing down hours, cutting staff, cutting supplies, heat, electricity, everything. It's, it's tough times, I know it's tough times in this town, but I've lived in this town for forty-six years. I love this town, going somewhere else is unthinkable, and I don't think you're gonna get a better deal than any other town. So, respectfully ask you for our ten thousand back so we can service our people on Sundays and help everyone from one-year-old to people waiting to ask me. Thank you.
So, I'm keeping you from order, orders and cocktails, is that it? Well, a couple of things, we're here every year, we know the drill, taxes are hard, nobody likes a tax increase, you know, myself included. The flip side to that is costs do go up, there's no denying that, principally medical insurance, we have a lot of union employees, they negotiate for increases in their salaries and benefits and so forth on both sides, education in town. So, some things are undeniable, even though we don't like taxes to go up. I would say though, Glad Park and Rec, because I think that's one of the best-run and most wonderful programs this town has, and if you ever look at the amount of programs they have, it's astounding for the budget that they have. It's just terrific, and it even brings in kids and families from out of town. So, I think that's something worthy to support. The town planner, I completely support. If any of you have doubts about the wisdom of having a town planner, go to a couple of planning and zoning meetings, and if you don't see the fireworks, go to a couple more, you'll see, you'll see something happen. And I think if more people knew of the behavior or lack of behavior that happens, the unprofessional behavior towards, I don't know, to the citizens, but to developers, it's bad news, folks. You've got to have a adult in the room who's gonna guide them to the right and proper decisions, and rewrite our regulations, they can't do it, they're not gonna do it. More of that, I thank you for coming in with some reductions, that started out with some good news. Now, I'm gonna go off message a little bit. I know police overtime is a favorite target, nobody likes police overtime, I can guarantee you that... I can guarantee you that the chief and his administrators don't like overtime. I don't like police overtime. And it will probably get cut tonight, but I would just point out the fact that cutting it doesn't make it go away. You can cut some things and they won't happen. The police have to take people to court. They have mandatory training, believe it or not, they get vacations. They get injured. They run a case. Crimes don't happen when they start their shift. Sometimes they happen at the end of their shift. They have to be carried over. If you call up for service, police can't say, "Well, I'm on overtime, I'm not coming." Send somebody over tomorrow. It's something you can't control by just cutting the budget. So they'll cut the budget, I'm sure, and, but it's not totally honest because halfway through the year, they'll have to supplement the money because some, certain things have to be done. It's a 24/7 operation. It's twenty-one shifts a week. They have to be filled. We fill them with a very minimal staff. Nobody believes that. There's three officers on the first shift, four, I thought, on patrol, now four on the second shift, and three at night. Twenty-one shifts of them. Thank you, Bruce. That's really nice of you to invite me, you know? I speak highly of you too.
My name is Judith Amy Hoesch. I'm from Founders Village, and I'm here tonight to just appeal to you all, see if you can help our senior citizens a little bit more. We don't get very much help from the state or from the town, and it's really, a really, really big hardship on a lot of us. I'm also disabled, and I'm eighty years old, and I'm on a fixed income. So please, please, everybody here, you should all ask for more of this senior citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea Bruman, senior boarder. I also would like to show my support for the town budget. I want to thank our board of selectmen, each and every one of them who has made major efforts to set the groundwork for a really good future for us. I believe that our police department, our library, our education system, our economic development is going to be the key for our future in this town. And if we keep cutting and we keep taking away, we're going to be in the same boat twenty years from now. It's time for us to make, take the bite and make an impression to create a future that we can all be proud of. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Pamela Fritz, Board General, Rowan, Clinton. I'm also president of the Taxpayers Association. This is very hard because every year I get up here and I speak, and I know that I have to talk about what's really affecting, the figures that really are affecting people, although it involves many things and many things that need to be done. I don't run the, I commend the Board of Finance, they really have a hard job. I'm involved with my own business in helping doctors with their practice management. I have to look at finances, I have to look at the bottom line, and sometimes have to make some cuts. One of the things that bothers me the most, we see surplus. I remember last year, the Taxpayers Association had our signs out, and we said we had a $1 million surplus. There was a $1 million surplus. And somebody put up signs and said we were liars. We were not liars. There was a $1 million surplus. And there's a $2 million surplus, as I understand it, this year, with the closing of here's the school and the rest of the budget figures. Let me just share something with you. Between 2010 and 2017, the tax increases have been fifteen percent in this town. The percentage of households in this town is going down. Stick a line, two percent, going down by two percent. And the median household income in this town is only increasing by three percent, but the taxes are going up fifteen percent. There are over a hundred and twenty homes on the market right now. I know many people that I personally know who put their house on the market. It's just not sustainable. And seniors, as one of them just pointed out to us, are living on fixed incomes. It's very, very hard to make ends meet with the increased cost. I would just like to say to you that this, when it comes, and I, you know, I couldn't, the education was one whole thing. State enrollment is declining, it is, state funding is going down for education, we know that, and enrollment is declining. And yet, our age group, our elderly, is going up. And I just think you have to take a look at a good, hard look, particularly at surplus, and you have to figure out a way not to put this burden again on the taxpayers. I would tell you right now, the Taxpayers Association will be fighting the increase. They will be fighting the increase. On the other hand, I'm going to be very honest with you. Having served on the Planning and Zoning Commission and being very active with the commissions that are going to be in existence, even after we have a new town manager in this town, a town planner is essential. So if you take any of the money, if you cut anything in the money, don't cut the town planner out. A town planner is essential. I think Phil Samuel made a very excellent point, and some others have too. Planning and zoning commission and some of our commissions are not in good shape right now. They're not doing what's good, what's best for the interests of the town. So I'm asking the Board of Finance, you've got to take a look at it, just take a look at it and see what you can do, because this sustainable, this fifteen percent increase over from 2010 through 2017 is just not sustainable. It cannot, it cannot keep going this way. Thank you.
James Connelly, eleven Yarren Rowan. The next ten years are very likely to be extremely painful for people working in the public sector in the communities like Clinton, which don't have a vast base of property to tax. There are some things, however, which have to be done and should be done regardless. One is the need for a town planner. The planning and zoning process is in chaos, and if something isn't done, this town will literally lose several times more in defending itself legally from unnecessary lawsuits due to the craziness that happens in the planning and zoning commission than the cost of a full-time professional town planner. I think we need to be sensible about that. Secondly, we have a gem of a public library. It is a remarkable institution. The idea of it starting to be shuttered because of relative or small amounts of money. You know, the library is an easy target for cuts, but the library is in many ways the heart of town, okay? Used to be the church, now it's the library. I think if it's possible, we're sort of those cuts. You know, it's nice to be able to think. I go to the library just by any time during regular working hours or during the weekend. That's a really good thing, and I do it that day. People at the library see me. It's an excellent institution. But now the larger problem is increases of three, four, and five percent are not sustainable. They are not sustainable. It's not something that we can control. The state government has made decisions. I happen to disagree with them, but they're decisions that are going to force an austerity version upon communities, and Clinton's going to be especially hard hit by that austerity regime. We're probably going to need increases in the budget of three, four, and five percent simply to take into account the cuts that will be coming from the state level. We cannot be generating these internal increases, and it's simply not sustainable. It's regrettable, but it's a fact.
My name is Phyllis McGrath, and I live at five Laconia, and I'm a member of the Library Ward. And others have said it, I would like to reinforce our request to the Board of Finance to reinstate the $10,000 cut for the library. Our library, as our first selectman often says, is the community center. It serves as the community center for Clinton. A hundred and forty-two thousand times a year, someone walks through the door of the library, and they're not just looking for books, and they're not just looking for videos. They are there to participate in all kinds of programs. We serve Clintonites from a year-old through seniors. For the little ones, we have early literacy programs. We have that amazing children's room that you all see when you come in for twins. We have the Nutbed Book Club. We have a Build a Terrarium event coming up, which is one of dozens of activities that go on. And for adults, we have, for, for the teens, excuse me, we have education, we have SAT and SAT and ACT prep. Again, a great cozy meeting room upstairs for them. And for adults, anything from tech to Tai Chi to TED Talks, passport prep, notary services, book clubs, support groups, Scrabble, sewing, first run, movies, music. These are just the tip of the iceberg. Though I repeat, the library is a community center. It's Clinton's community center, and we need to, to provide all of the programs and services that enrich the lives of every one of us. So I urge you to restore the $10,000 cut. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Last call.
All right, well, thank you, everybody, for your time, for your comments and coming here.
This video provided as a public service by Kirk Carr, the Kirkster. Thank you for watching.